नामये नुव अंदरी एसु सिलुवलो नीकै काट्छतन आरु धीरम एसु सिलुवलो नीकै काट्छतन आरु धीरम देवु नी तीर्पुपन्दे एसु तना देहमुलो देवु नी तीर्पुपन्दे एसु तना देहमुलो अंधुवलन नशुध्यमये नु मलिनमयन नी देहम अंधुवलन नशुध्यमये नु मलिनमयन नी देहम तृत्वमयन देवुडू नरुणि चेसे तन पोलिकगा आत्मप्राण देहमुलतो परिपूर्णमुगा तृत्वमयन देवुडू नरुणि चेसे तन पोलिकगा आत्मप्राण देहमुलतो परिपूर्णमुगा आत्मप्राण देहमुलु उन्डवलेनु आत्मप्राण देहमुलु उन्डवलेनु एसु प्रभु निराकडलो निंदा रहितमुगा एसु प्रभु निराकडलो निंदा रहितमुगा तृत्वमयन देवुडू नरुणि चेसे तन पोलिकगा आत्मप्राण देहमुलतो परिपूर्णमुगा तृत्वमयन देवुडू नरुणि चेसे तन पोलिकगा आत्मप्राण देहमुलतो परिपूर्णमुगा
Before we hear word of God, let's sing our theme song, song number twenty. प्रभु एसु त्वरगावच्चुन सिद्धपड़ी नी उन्डेदवा Song number twenty. And this is the theme song for this conference. Theme song, प्रभु एसु त्वरगावच्चुन सिद्धपड़ी नी उन्डेदवा. When we sing the last stanza, we all stand and sing. When we sing the last stanza, we all will stand and sing. During the time and during the last time when we sing, the kids will be going to their son's school.
सिद्धपड़ी नी उन्डेदवा प्रभु एसु त्वरगावच्चुन सिद्धपड़ी नी उन्डेदवा आयन आलयमुलो निवु स्तंभमुगा निलचेदवा आयन आलयमुलो निवु स्तंभमुगा निलचेदवा प्रभु एसु त्वरगावच्चुन सिद्धपड़ी नी उन्डेदवा प्रभु एसु त्वरगावच्चुन सिद्धपड़ी नी उन्डेदवा आलयमुलो ओकस्तंभमुगा नुडेदरु जयिंचु वारु आलयमुलो ओकस्तंभमुगा नुडेदरु अंधुलो वारु इकमी दटा अंधुलो वारु इकमी दटा नटिकी स्तिरुलायु नुडेदरु नटिकी स्तिरुलायु नुडेदरु प्रभु एसु त्वरगावच्चुन सिद्धपड़ी नी उन्डेदवा प्रभु एसु त्वरगावच्चुन सिद्धपड़ी नी उन्डेदवा देवु निवलन गुठिन वारु लोकमुनु जयिंचेदरु देवु निवलन गुठिन वारु लोकमुनु जयिंचेदरु लोकाशलापई जयमुकोंदु लोकाशलापई जयमुकोंदु जयजीवितमुनु कलिगी उन्डु जयजीवितमुनु कलिगी उन्डु प्रभु एसु त्वरगावच्चुन सिद्धपड़ी नी उन्डेदवा प्रभु एसु त्वरगावच्चुन सिद्धपड़ी नी उन्डेदवा प्रभु एसु त्वरगा गानायुन्नाडु एवडु नी किरीकमुलु प्रभु एसु त्वरगा गानायुन्नाडु एवडु नी किरीकमुलु अपहारिम पातुंदु नट्लुगा अपहारिम पातुंदु नट्लुगा कलिगी नदानी निचे पट्टुमु कलिगी नदानी निचे पट्टुमु प्रभु एसु त्वरगावच्चुन सिद्धपड़ी नी उन्डेदवा प्रभु एसु त्वरगावच्चुन सिद्धपड़ी नी उन्डेदवा कृष्टु एसु सीघमुगावच्चुन जयिंचु वारिंकोनि पोवन कृष्टु एसु सीघमुगावच्चुन जयिंचु वारिंकोनि पोवन कीडुवलन जयिंपा बढ़का कीडुवलन जयिंपा बढ़का मेलु चेता कीडुं जयिंचु मेलु चेता कीडुं जयिंचु प्रभु एसु त्वरगावच्चुन सिद्धपड़ी नी उन्डेदवा प्रभु एसु त्वरगावच्चुन सिद्धपड़ी नी उन्डेदवा आलयमुलो प्रभु सेवच्चे उच्च स्तंभमुगा निलच्चि उन्डु आलयमुलो प्रभु सेवच्चे उच्च स्तंभमुगा निलच्चि उन्डु सरीर क्रियनकु चोटिर्वका सरीर क्रियनकु चोटिर्वका मन प्रभु उनु महिमा पर्चु मन प्रभु उनु महिमा पर्चु प्रभु एसु त्वरगावच्चुन सिद्धपड़ी नी उन्डेदवा प्रभु एसु त्वरगावच्चुन सिद्धपड़ी नी उन्डेदवा आयन आलयमुलो निवु स्तंभमुगा निलचेदवा आयन आलयमुलो निवु स्तंभमुगा निलचेदवा प्रभु एसु त्वरगावच्चुन सिद्धपड़ी नी उन्डेदवा प्रभु एसु त्वरगावच्चुन सिद्धपड़ी नी उन्डेदवा
Brother Neville is in our midst. He is from Sri Lanka, many of us know. So he is shepherding over their Christian fellowship church. And also I request you please take notes. If you need any notepad, so make sure you can get the notepad and the registration desk. And also you will have quiz probably tomorrow night or Saturday. So you have to get, if you want to get the prize, you got to take the notes. Not only taking the notes, after you go to the room, you have to meditate that notes. Yes, brother. Dear brothers and sisters, It is our great privilege once again To gather together in this manner To look into the precious word of God together.
प्रिय सहोदरी सहोदरलेरा इरीतिका मरामुंद्रमु प्रशस्तमयन देवु नी वाक्यमलो ध्यानिंस निमत्तमाई इरीतिका कुड़िरावटमु एन्तो धन्यकरमयनदी
God has been leading us to several lines of scripture from time to time Taken from his word as a theme for special occasions.
प्रत्येक महिना twenty कुड़िकललो देवु तना परिषदमयन ग्रंधमलो नुची वाक्यमलो नुची कुन्नी लेखन भागालो मूलांसिमुगा तीस्कुनी मनतो माट्लाड्तु वस्तुनारु
Once we begin to meditate upon such themes, we realize how rich the word of God is.
आरीतिका ई प्रत्येक महिना कुड़िकललो देवु निका वाक्यानी मनमु ध्यानिंस्टो मधिल्नपेटिनपुडु मनकी गुत्तुचेदी मनकी अर्थमयन विषयमेंटंटे देवु निका वाक्यमु एन्ता स्रेष्ठमयनदी
How wonderfully and mysteriously that God has brought into one line of scripture Most of the spiritual instruction that we need to have in our spiritual walk with the Lord.
प्रभु वार्तो मना आत्मी महिना twenty नडकलो कावल्सने twenty सूचनलु एन्ता अभुतमुगा एन्ता मर्मायिक्तमुगा ओका वचनमलोने ओका पदमलोने एन्तो निगूड़ महिना twenty देवु निका आत्मी यन सच्चालु मनकी तेलिस्तु उन्टाई
Those who have read the theme verse already would have been spoken to by the Lord through his word And you may have already received the message.
यवरैथे योका मूलांसानी तमा परिषद ग्रंधनुची सदुकुन्तो वच्चारो प्रभु वारु मीतो इप्पड़के माट्लाडिउ उन्तरानी प्रभु वारु मीतो एदैथे माट्लाड्तलिस्कुनारो अवर्तमानमु मीक अर्थमयन उन्टनानी मैं नम्मुतू उन्नम
Very often we have a direct message coming to us through the line Which can be a literal interpretation or literal understanding of the word.
ओका लेखन भागनो उन्नटुटु ओका वाक्यानी मनं सूझ्कुनपुडु आ वाक्यमलो उन्नटु twenty अक्षराणुगणमयन twenty अर्थमु अनेदी मनकी बैलपडतु उन्टु
But during a special conference or a holy convocation We are able to spend time to look at not only the straightforward literal meaning of the word But to go into the scriptures and to see the contextual meaning And what does it mean in the context And also examine the verses that are round about And get a fuller message of the scriptures.
मरी ओका वाक्यानी सदिनपुडु अक्षराणु सम्द अक्षराणुगणमयन अर्थमात्रमे काकुन्ना ई twenty प्रत्येक महिना कुड़िकललो मनमु ई वाक्य भागालो ध्यानिस्तिनपुडु संधार्भानसाहितमयन twenty अवगाहन मनकी कलिगिनपुडु लेखनमलो उन्नटु twenty मूलमयन आमसानी की सम्मानिंचिना अनेकमयन विषयालु मनं तेलिस्कुन्टु रावचु
In the book of Revelation chapters two and three We read the twelve great promises to an overcoming believer Given directly by the Lord Jesus Christ In the seven messages given to the seven churches of Asia Minor.
मरी आस्या महिनलो उन्नटु twenty येड़ संघालकु प्रभु वारु नेरुगा माट्लाड्तु येवैथे येड़ पत्रिकल रास्तु वच्चारो आ येड़ पत्रिकललो उन्नटु twenty पन्नेंडु वाक्यधानालु जयजीवितमु कलिगिनटु twenty विश्वासलुकु देवु अन्ग्रहिंचना मनं चुड़वाचु
And it is not only, it's almost impossible for us to just pick one line out of all that string of verses And the twelve promises given to the overcomer in the seven letters That it is almost impossible for us to pick only one up, but we have done so And now we want to see this in the context of the rest of the scriptures.
ईयोका पन्नेंडु वाक्यधानालु जयजीतमु कलिगि जीविंचे विश्वासलुकु देवु एवेथे अनुग्रहिस्तुनारो वाटिनी मनमु सम्पूर्तिका ध्यानिंस्टोम आसाज्यम अंतमात्रमे कादु आ पन्नेंडु वाक्यधानालो ओका वाक्यधानानी तीस्कुनसरे दानी सम्पूर्तिका ध्यानिंची दानी की देवु मनतो माट्लाड्लिस्नटु twenty विषयालु ओका योका कान्फ्रेंस कुड़िकललो तेलिस्कोटम अनेदी कुड़ा आसाज्यम
Many believers have been reading the book of Revelation.
अनेकमयन विश्वासलु प्रकटन ग्रंधमुने सदुतु वच्चिउन्टाई
Especially during the last couple of years When unprecedented things were happening among us in the world That many were able to sit and study And see the relevance of the things that are happening to the scriptures.
ईमरी गता रेंडु समस्त्रल अकृतमु मना प्रपंचमलो मुनुपेन्नडु जर्गनटु twenty अनेकमयन विषयल जरिङनपुडु मनलो चालमंदी इललोने उन्नपुडु ई प्रकटन ग्रंधानी की सम्मानिंचिना अनेकमयन विषयल मीर सदिउन्तारानी अदैविदंगा प्रकटन ग्रंधमलो रायबन्नटु twenty विषयालु मना प्रस्तुत कालनकी एविदंगा संदर्भान सारमयनम अनेवी कुड़ा मीर ग्रहिंचुन्टाई
So this theme verse is the message of the Lord Jesus Christ The challenge of the Lord Jesus Christ to his church.
ई मूलांसिमु मनमै एदैथे एनुकुनामो अदि प्रभु एन एसु कृष्टु वारु तना संघानकी इस्तुनटु twenty सवालु
May the Lord lead us through the speakers To a greater understanding of these challenges, these promises that God has given to the church.
देवु तना संघानकी चिनटु twenty सवालनु वाक्यधानालनु योका कुड़िकलो अनेकमंदी वक्तलद्वारा ई वचनानी की सम्मानिंचिनटु twenty लोतैना मनकी ग्रहिंपु देवु दमनकान ग्रहिंचनु काक
Tonight, dear brothers and sisters, just to begin this series of messages Let us, I would like to suggest that we do an overview Or do a study of the overview of the whole book of Revelation.
योका कुड़िकलो मनमु वर्षका अनेकमयन अवतमानालु विनकमुंदु ई दिनमु ई प्रकटन ग्रंधानी की सम्मानिंचिनटु twenty विहंगा विक्षणानी पुड़मनं चुद्धम
To make the theme verse more meaningful to us.
ईयोका मूलांसिमु मनकी मरिन्तगा अर्थमयलाग्न
What God has in store for his people.
देवु तन प्रजलकु एदैथे सिद्धपरिचिनाडु
So it is the meaning and the main message of the book of Revelation That we are trying to gather tonight.
ईरा द्रिकाल समयोलो प्रकटन ग्रंधमलो देवु एदैथे सिद्धपरिचाडो मूलांसामसानी सम्मानिंचिनटु twenty अर्थानी मनं तेलिस्कोटानी प्रायत्थितम
If we are able to describe the book of Revelation very briefly The theme of the book is the glory of the Lord Jesus Christ.
प्रकटन ग्रंधानी क्लुप्तंगा मनमु एवरकान विवरिंचाली अंटे दानी एविदंगा विवरिंचसंटे प्रभु एन एसु कृष्टु वार्यका महिमगा मनमु वर्णिंस्वचु
And it is a deeper understanding of that glory of the Lord Jesus That will help us to lead that overcoming life In this world that is trying to defeat the purposes of God.
प्रभु एन एसु कृष्टु वार्यका एदैथे महिमा उन्तुंदु आ महिमलो उन्नटु twenty लोतैना अर्थानी मनं ग्रहिंचनपुडु अपुडु ई लोकमु मनलनी ओडिपोटानी की चेस्तुना प्रायत्थि प्रयत्नानी मनमु जयिंची जयजीतमु जीविंचनानी की दोहत्पडतुनी
Shall we pray?
प्रादिंस्कुन्नाम
Our gracious loving heavenly Father
मा कुर्पगला प्रेमगला परलो कुपतंड्री
We thank thee for the revelation of thy dear son, the Lord Jesus Christ in the holy scriptures.
परिषद ग्रंधमलो मी प्रीकुमारडु मा रक्षकुडैने एसु कृष्टु वार्यका बैलपर्करकै मीको अन्दनालु
We thank thee Lord for revealing to us the mystery of the Lord Jesus Christ That was hidden from the people of the Old Testament times And in the ages of the past Thou hast now revealed them to us That we may behold the glory of the Son of God And we inspired and we transformed in our lives.
प्रवा पूर्वकालमु नुची पातनिबंधनलो मी प्रीकुमारडु मा रक्षकुडैने एसु कृष्टु पार्वर्यका महिमनु मीर वारिकु चुपिंसलेदु वारिकु मर्मम्गाने उन्चारु आइथे प्रवा ई नाटिकालुना जीविस्तुना माकु प्रभु एन एसु कृष्टु वार्यका महिमनु अर्थंचेस्कोटानी कावकास्मिस्तु तद्वारा रूपांतरमचिन्दनटु twenty जीवितानी जीविंचनानी की मीर दोहत्पडतनंदके सहायम चेस्तुनंदके मीको अन्दनालु
Lord, it is our sincere desire to be like this What thou wants us to be, an overcomer in this world Which is filled with sin and controlled by the enemy That we may be able to lead that life that will please thee.
प्रवा ई लोकमलो मैं जीविस्तुनपुडु पापुम्तो निप्पबडी पदे पदे ममले तरदुवटानी प्रायत्थिस्तोटु ई लोकलो जीविस्तुनपुडु प्रवा जयजीतमु ममले कलिगुंडालनी प्रभु आरीतिका ई मूलांसिम्द्वारा मातो माट्लाड्तुनंदके मीको अन्दनालु
Lord, we thank thee for this great promise that thou hast given to the overcomer To make him the pillar of the temple of God.
देवु निका कालमलो स्तंभमुगा उन्डेदारानी मीर विश्वासलुकी चिनटु twenty वाक्यधानानु बेट्टी मीको अन्दनालु
Lord, lead us to a deeper understanding of this precious fragment of scripture.
प्रवा लेखमलो उन्नटु twenty ई प्रशस्तमयन वाक्यानकी अर्थंचेस्कुनेलाग्न लोतैना अर्थंचेस्कुनेलाग्न ममले नडिपिंस्मनी वेडुकुन्टुना
So we pray that thou will, Lord, move and motivate and inspire and guide All thy servants whom thou hast called to minister the word Lord, that we may be able to, Lord, explain the precious word And, Lord, that it may affect our lives and transform us.
प्रवा प्रपंचम नुची मीर तीस्कोचिनटु twenty मीयोका परिषदलानदरु कुड़ा ही वाक्यानिमेंटुंदगा मीर मामजिला संशरिंसंडी ममले ब्रोचाह परिचंडी तद्वारा प्रभु ई वाक्यमु मैंम इतरलेख बोधिंसलाग्न रूपांतरमचिन्दनटु twenty जीवितमु जीविंसलाग्न सहायम चेमनी वेडुकुन्टुना
Now, Lord, help us as we look at the book of Revelation Though we have not been able to read it Maybe during the last month or so We pray that all of us may remember what we have read some time ago And we may be able to see the core meaning of the book of Revelation.
प्रवा गतमासुमलो मालो चालमंदी प्रकटन ग्रंधानी सदिउन्डकोचु आइथे वार इन्तकमुंद चदिनटु twenty आयका संदर्भानु ई समयोलो गुत्तुचेमनी तद्वारा ईयोका प्रकटन ग्रंधमलो उन्नटु twenty लोतैना मरी दानीका सारामसानी मैंमंद्र अर्थंचेस्कुन लाग्न सहायंचेमनी वेडुकुन्टु
Lord, open our eyes of understanding.
प्रवा मा मनोनेत्राल मीर तेलवानी
We will thy son to us.
प्रवा मीयोका कुमारणी मक प्रत्यक्ष
Without his glory, the knowledge of the glory of the Lord Jesus, we become empty people.
प्रवा मी कुमारणी एका तंडी महिमलेकुंडा मैंमंद्रमु कालीवार्म उत्तुन्नाम
Filled with our own selves.
प्रवा ममलो ममलो ममले मातोने मीम निम्पुकुनुनाम
Which is no use for God of man.
प्रवा अदि देवुनकी कानी मानुनकानी ए मात्रम उपयोग
Help us, Lord, that we may see the glory of the Son of God.
प्रवा देवु निका कुमारणी एका महिमनु चोटानी मक सहायम चेमनी
That we may accept that glory, that we may fall down at that glory And that will make us people useful to God and man.
प्रवा महिमनु मैंम स्वीकरिंची दानी ग्रहिंचनु वार्माई प्रवा मोकालमेदमीकु सायगलपडी तद्वारा देवुनकी मानुनकी मैंम उपयोगगरकंगा उन्गलगनगा सहायम चेमनी
Lord, open thy word to us.
प्रवा मीयोका वाक्यानी मक तेलवानी
Pray with thanksgiving in the name loving Savior, the Lord Jesus Christ.
वन्दनालु चेलिस्तु प्रेमगला रक्षकुनी नामोलो प्रादिंचडिवेडुकुन्सु नाम तंड्री
Amen. We are fascinated by the old, the wonderful prophecies that are found in the book of Revelation.
प्रकटन ग्रंधमलो मरी रायबन्नटु twenty प्रवचन आत्मकमयनटु twenty वचनालु मनं सूझ्कुनपुडु अदि मनक एन्तो आश्चर्यम कलिगिजेस्तु उन्तुनी
To join the apostle, the Lord said That you eat this book and it will make your mouth very sweet.
मरी अपोस्टलन योहानकु मरी प्रभु वारी एविदंगा सेलविचारु ई ग्रंधानी सदु सदिनपुडु अदि नी नोटनी एन्तो माधुरमतो माधुरियमतो निम्पतुदियन
Most of us Christians are experiencing that part.
मरी चालमंदी मना क्रिस्तोलानदरुम कुड़ा आयका भागानी मनमु अनुभविस्तु उन्नम
We like to know the prophecies.
मनमंद्रमु प्रवचनालु तेलिस्कोलनु कुन्ताम
We like to explain the prophecies to others.
मरी इतरलुकु मनमु प्रवचनालु बोधिंसलेनु अनुकुन्ताम
But the Bible also says, the Lord said, it will make your belly bitter. It will make, if you eat the book, it will make your belly bitter.
आइथे ईयोका पुस्तकानी मने एप्पडैथे सदुतारो अदि नी कड़पुनु मरी चेदुगा चेस्तुन्दी
That is the realization of the truth Of that is contained in the book will make our hearts sorrowful.
इप्पडैथे आ पुस्तकमलो उन्नटु twenty सारामसानी मन अर्थंचेस्कुन्तामो अपुडु अदि मन प्रदयालु एन्तो भारभरितंगा चेस्तु
We have been light-heartedly talking about the details that are given in the book of Revelation about the future.
मरी भविष्यतु गुरिंची प्रकटन ग्रंधमलो रायबन्नटु twenty अनेक विषयालु मन एन्तो सुनायसंगा सुलुगा माट्लाड्कुन्टुन्ताम
So many books have been written on the book of Revelation.
प्रकटन ग्रंधमेदा अनेकमयन पुस्तकाल रायबड्डाई
We keep on arguing about matters.
मनमु अनेकमयन विषयालु गुरिंची वादालु पेटुकुन्टुन्ताम
We would like to see our own interpretation properly established everywhere.
मनमु एदैथे अर्थंचेस्कुन्नामो दानीने अंदरुगा अर्थंचेस्कोलनी मनमु एन्तकानो अनुकुन्टुन्ताम
But we realize that the most, the purpose of the book of Revelation God giving us was entirely a different one.
आइथे देवु तन प्रकटन ग्रंधानी मनकी इचिनटु twenty कारणमु अदि इप्पुड़वारुकु मनमु अनुकुन्नटु twenty कारणालकंटे भिन्नमयन कारण
It is a revelation of the Son of God.
अदि देवु निका कुमारणी एका प्रत्यक्षता
So I am going to very briefly now mention The sevenfold revelation of the glory of the Lord Jesus Christ in the book of Revelation.
इप्पुडु क्लुप्तंगा येड़ मार येड़ येड़ अमसालडो प्रभु एन एसु कृष्टु वार्यका महिमा प्रकटन ग्रंधमलो एविदंगा रायबडिंदी विवरिंचपडिंदी अनेदी मन पुड़च्छु सूझ्कोपुतनाम
From that, we could come to the next step That is the chapters two and three, we have the seven letters And from there we can come to the sixth letter and the promise that is given to the overcomer.
आतरवाता मनमु रेंडु गुड़ अज्जायलो रायबन्नटु twenty येड़ पत्रिकलल चूझ्कुन्ताम आविदंगा आरो पत्रिका मनकी एदैथे मूलांसिमु रायबड्डन्ददा आनी चूझ्कुन्ताम तरवाता येड़ो पत्रिकन कुड़ा मनं चूछ्ताम
Meditation of the book of Revelation should always resulting A greater and a deeper understanding of the glory of the Son of God.
प्रकटन ग्रंधानी मनमु इप्पडै ध्यानिंचिनपडिकुडा आ ध्यानमुद्वारा प्रभु एन एसु कृष्टु वार्यका महिमनु मनकु अर्थंचेटमलो दानी प्रति सारी ध्यानिंचिनपुडु आ महिमयोका अर्थम अनेदी मन जीवितालु पिलुकुतु रावानी
We can divide the book of Revelation into seven parts.
मनमु प्रकटन ग्रंधानी येड़ भागालगा विवजिंस्वचु
Each part is about some aspect of the glory of Christ.
प्रति भागमु कुड़ा प्रभु एन एसु कृष्टु वार्यका महिमलो ओका भागुगा उन्तुंदु
Number one, the resurrection glory of the Lord Jesus Christ.
पुनुरोधानमयन टुटी प्रभु एन एसु कृष्टु वार्यका महिमा
That is chapter one.
अदि मोट्टमदिति अज्जायम
Chapter one of the book of Revelation is filled with resurrection glory of the Lord Jesus.
प्रकटन ग्रंधमंता कुड़ा पुनुरोधानडैना एसु कृष्टु वार्यका महिमतो निप्पबडी उन्दी
And this is the present day Jesus.
इदि नेटिकालमलो उन्नटु एसुनु कुचिनटु twenty विवरण
Many people would like to think of the Lord Jesus Either as the baby of Bethlehem or the man of Calvary.
मरी एसु कृष्टु प्रभु अनेकमंदी बेथलिहेमलो उन्ना बालुल्लागकानी कल्वरीकन कृष्टलागकानी उहिंस्कुन्टु उन्तार
And in that meditation, we forget about the present day Lord Jesus, how he is today.
आरीतिका ध्यानिंचे क्रमोलो ई दिनाना नेटिक्षणाना प्रभु एन एसु कृष्टु वारु एरीतिका उन्नारु अन्ना विषयानी मनमु मर्चिपोताम
In chapter one of the book of Revelation, we have that resurrection glory of the Lord Jesus Christ.
प्रकटन ग्रंधमु मधिद्याज्जायमलो पुनुरोधानमहिमा प्रभु एन एसु कृष्टु वार्यका पुनुरोधानमहिमा गुरिंची रायबडी उन्दी
In the Isle of Patmos, when John the Apostle was there The Lord Jesus came behind and John had to turn and look at the Lord Jesus. the Lord Jesus came behind and John had to turn and look at the Lord Jesus and he saw the one who is standing in the midst of the seven golden candlesticks.
Patmasnu deepavalo, apostolana powlu unnapudu, apostolana yohar unnapudu, esu kriestu pravvar, tanapili chadu, tanepidate tirikichusadu, edu stambhamalu madja, nelchina, manushukumarini, apostolana yohana chustuvachadu.
And this is what he saw.
Adhi, aina chusadu.
That's all about the resurrection glory.
Adhi, chusindantakuda, purnurudhana mahima.
In verse thirteen of chapter one.
Padhumudu, maditi ajyayam, padhumudu.
Shall we read all together, please?
Manamandram kalisichadukunam.
And in the midst of the seven candlesticks.
Edu suvarna deepastam.
One light unto the Son of Man.
A deepastam.
Clothed with a garment down to the foot. And guard about the paps with a golden garland.
Aina padamal matukdikutunnavasu.
Verse fourteen.
Padnalago vachinamu.
His head and his hair were white like wool as white as snow.
Himamanta.
And his eyes were as a flame of fire.
Aina netramalu, agni jalaalalu, eunndenu, padihinavachinu.
And his feet like unto fine brass as if they burned in a furnace.
Nareitsunna, aparanjitunna, samanavayana.
And his voice at the sound of many waters.
Vistara jalapravahumal, dhanivalayenu. Padharavachinamu.
And he had in his right hand seven stars.
Edu nakshatrung.
Out his mouth went a sharp toothache so.
Aina noti, rendansala, galakadi.
And his countenance was as the sunshine in his hair.
Mahatejasu, prakasinsunna, surinavale, eunndenu.
So now, all of us who have the habit of sharing messages from the word of God, here we have a sevenfold message once again.
Ikka, manam parishuddhi.
A seven point message.
Yavreka, ite, parishuddhaganavandunchi, varthamanaal, chepetatunna, laavatunnu, ikka chusadu, gada, edu amsalu, esu kriestu pravvani gurichi, aina, purnurudhana mahima gurichi.
The resurrection glory of the Lord Jesus Christ.
Pravvani esu kriestu variyaka, purnurudhana mahima.
Many of us are not able to see this glory.
Manalo, chala mandi, yaka mahima nu, chodaleeni varanga unnam.
Christian world is by and large blind to this glory.
Christava, prapanchamanta kuda, mananuchuskuunatlate, chala matuku, varandari, ee vishyamalo, andhuligavunnaaru.
That is the reason as to why we lead defeated lives.
Andhuvalanani, manamandram kuda, odi painatvanti, jeevthala, jivistunnam.
Please meditate on these scriptures, these few lines, few verses, and try to write down different aspects of the resurrection glory of the Lord Jesus.
Ee, manan chadukunatvachinalu, bhaga dhyaninshandi, dhyaninstundvara, pravvani esu kriestu variyaka, purnurudhana mahima, kusambandinchina, anekamayana vishyalu, miruteliskora, ni prayitinchandi.
We need to have a little bit of imagination.
Ikka, manam, kunchu, uhya, anedhi, manakavasram.
Meditation.
Mari dhyanamu.
Thinking deeply.
Inka lothiga, alachinstum.
And then write them down.
Aatharavata, vaatni, manam rasukunturavani.
See, we have the Lord Jesus.
Ikka, pravvani esu kriestuvaru.
Clothed with a garment down to the foot.
Aina, vastramu, padamal matukudharinsanu.
What can we make of it?
Darani, beti, manam, ee, abdhanchesko.
It is a clear sign of the lordship of the Lord Jesus Christ.
Adhi, pravvani esu kriestuvarika, prabutvamu, dani ki, venthospashtamayana suchana.
Servants were not allowed, the slaves were not allowed to wear long garments.
Sevakalu, ee podugati, vastranani, dhyaninshani, varikamutleedu.
But here we find the Lord Jesus particularly, John is mentioning that he is wearing a long garment down to the foot.
Ikka, pratiekanga chusinatlate, yohan, esu kriestu pravvani varnistu, esu kriestu pravvaru, padamal matukudharinsanu, unnaaru, rastunna.
The Lord Jesus was hanging John's soul on the cross, naked and in shame.
Mari yohanu, esu kriestu pravvar, silumayana, unnapudu, digambaru, entho, mari, shame, nundina, vektiga, atan chusradu.
But now he is wearing this long garment down to the foot.
Aite, epidu, esu kriestu pravvaru, entho, podugati vastramu, tanapadamal matukudharinsanu.
So the first point I just gave you as an example of the resurrection glory of the Lord Jesus.
Epiduvaruku, meekuchepetatvanti, mottamaditi, amsmukavudharana, adhi, deneke, ente, pravvani esu kriestuvarika, purnurudhana mahima.
Lordship of the Lord Jesus.
Esu kriestu pravvaniyaka, prabutvani.
And secondly, on the same feature, we have the priesthood of the Lord Jesus.
Rendavadi ga, pravvani esu kriestuvarika, aajakattavangurichu, unnaadi.
So this is resurrection glory, one by one, look at all the details given, John was taking time to give us the details, what he looked like.
Yohanu, tanaka, samayani teeskoni, esu kriestu pravvaru, purnurudhana edaina, tharavata, ee vidanga unnaadu, ani, entho, vivranatmakanga, okadani, tharavata, okati, manakivristuvachadu, vaatni, dhyaninshandi, vaatni, abdhancheskuun.
So the purpose of chapter one is that we may see that glory of the Lord Jesus.
Prakatana grandhavamo, moditiyaka, moditiyajyayamika, udeshemu, ee, muti, ente, pravvani esu kriestuvarika, purnurudhana mahima nu, aah mahima nu, manam, sudagalgunatlate.
This is what we need.
Adhi, manakavasram.
We have all the other things.
Manaki, meekanekamayana amsalu, manam.
We have good Bible knowledge.
Manaki, mari, leekanala, gurichinatvanti, entho, telivundi.
We know how to preach, we know how to listen also.
Mari, ee vidanga, bodinsalo, ee vidanga, vinala, kuda, manakthelsu.
But we need to know the glory of Christ.
Aite, pravvani esu kriestuvarika mahima nu, manam chuskavu.
That will overwhelm us.
Adhi, epidate, chuskuntamo, manam, ubbitupipai potam.
Overpower every evil tendency that is still in us.
Avidanga, epidu, edinga, mahima, chuskuntamo, manalo, apadiki, kuda, ee, date, mari, apavitraatmak, sambandinchina, vishyalu, untena, vaatni, ni, jayinsanani, shakti, kuda, manam, pindutam.
Then we go over to the second aspect of the glory of the Lord Jesus in the Book of Revelation.
Prakatana grandhavalo, pravvani esu kriestuvarika mahima, kusambandinchina, rendu amsalani, manam valta.
The glory of the Lord Jesus in the church.
Mari sanghamalo, pravvani esu kriestuvarika mahima nu, manam chustam.
That is what you find in chapters two and three.
Adhi, manam, prakatana grandhavalo, rendu budu ajyalak chustunnam.
So that is the second division of the Book of Revelation.
Adhi, prakatana grandhane, manam, edu bhagala, bhaginchinapudu, vivajinchinapudu, edi, rendava bhagamu.
Glory of the Lord Jesus in the church.
Pravvani esu kriestuvarika, mari sanghamalo, notvanti mahima.
Now, this is a terrible situation among us, dear brothers and sisters.
Ee majja, epidu, undatvanti, paristhitlo, priya sahodhile, sahodhala, entho, bhadakaramayana, sanghatul, unthu, nae.
We are seeking everything else but not the glory of Christ in the church.
Manam, kriestu yaka, sanghamalo, onna mahima, na, tapite, pratidani, anekamayana vishyalu, kosa, manam, empaladu, unnam.
That is why we remain unsatisfied.
Andhuvalne, manam, inkka, asantrutitito, nimpa, nimpa, badnava, varanga, unthu, unnam.
We have the best of preachers.
Manalo, chuskunatlate, entho, sreshtamayana, bodakalunnaaru.
We are still unsatisfied.
Aina, padikini, kuda, inkka, manam, triktichanda, leedu.
We go with this satisfaction now, I have heard a good message, but that has not done anything in my life.
Aneka, varthamanaal, unna tharavata, nee, entho, manchi, varthamanaal, unnaanu, kani, adhi, na, ka, jeevthani, truktine, evatle, dani, asantrutitita, vela, varanga, unthu, unnam.
The reason is.
Dani, karanu, ee, muti.
The glory of the Lord Jesus Christ in the church has not been revealed, not been seen.
Pravvani esu kriestuvarika, sanghamalo, notvanti mahima, adhi, pratyakshaparshapadleedu, sanghamalo, anta matramayka, adhi, sanghatulandharu, kuda, chudale.
The main purpose of us gathering together as a local church is that the Lord Jesus may reveal to us his glory.
Stani kisanganga, manamandram, koodukana, mudke, udeshi, eutente, pravvani esu kriestuvaru, tanayaka mahima nu, sanghavalo, manakichupinsanani.
Nothing else will satisfy our heart.
Mari, inkka, ee, di, kuda, manam, pradaalnu, triktiparshaledu.
No amount of Bible knowledge will satisfy us.
Entha, Bible, kusambandinchina, telivikna, na, unnapadikini, kuda, adhi, manalitupiparshaledu.
It is the glory of Christ.
Adhi, esu kriestuvarika mahima.
And that is why with so much, so much enthusiasm and desire, the Lord was revealing himself to the church.
Adhi, karanu, beti, entho, udsukata, esu kriestu pravvaru, tanayaka mahima nu, sanghani, pratyakshaparshatunnaaru.
So there again, you have a seven point message.
Appudu, mari, chuskunatlate, akka, mari, eduka, edantala, edu amsal, galino, vartamana, unndatl.
Go one by one, how the Lord was revealing himself to the church.
Okadani, tharavata, okati, pravvaru, tananu, sanghani, ee vidanga, bailaparshkuntunnaaru, pratyakshaparshkuntunnaaru, dhyaninshandi.
Chapter two, verse one, for an example.
Udharanaku, rendava ajyayam, moditi vachinamu.
Unto the angel of the church of Ephesus write, these things said he that holdeth the seven stars in his right hand, who walketh in the midst of the seven golden candlesticks.
Ephesalo, onna sanghapudutaku, ilagurayamu, edu nakshatrungalu, tanakudi cheta, patukoni, edu deepastam, humala, majja, sancharinshuvaru, chepu, sanghatulevanaga.
So we must see that the meaning of that expression.
Aaka, raibandatvanti, vaakyam, yaka, ardhani, manam, thelsko, ni prayitinchandi.
And then after meditating on that, we can go down to verse eight.
Darani, dhyaninchin tharavata, manam, tharavata, neevavachinani, vellatsu.
Unto the angel of the church in Smyrna write these things said the first and the last, which was dead and is alive.
Smyrna lo, onna sanghapudutaku, ilagurayamu, moditi varu, khadi, khadapati varu, na, undi, bruthaai, marala, bratikna, varu, chepu, sanghatulevanaga.
So first, first revelation to the church of Ephesus was the headship of the Lord Jesus Christ.
Mottamaditi, ga, Ephesalo, onna sanghani, pratyakshaparshinatvanti, ee, muti, ee, esu kriestu pravvarika, sirasatvamu.
The second revelation, verse eight, the uniqueness of the Lord Jesus Christ.
Neevavava, vachinamlo, raibandat, Smyrna, sanghani, raibandatvanti, edi, esu kriestu pravvarika, asamarnatvamu.
And then verse twelve is the third revelation.
Panndava vachinamalo, onna, edi, moodava.
And to the angel of the church in Pergamos write these things said he, which had the sharp sword with two edges.
Pergamal, onna sanghapudutaku, ilagurayamu, varu, ina, rendansala, galakhatgamu, galavadu, na, galavadu, chepu, sanghatulevanaga.
There we have the word of the Lord Jesus Christ.
Ikka, pravvani esu kriestuvarika, vaakyani, manam, chustunnam.
So I am just giving an introduction to these things so that you may continue the study.
Neen, vitanidi, sambandinchina, upodghata, matrami, istunna, tathdvara, miru, meyaka, dhanaani, yaka, patnaani, kura saginsavatsu.
So the rest we have to do as homework now.
Epidu, chayalsin, anta, man, intigal, tharavat, chayalsinatvanti, pani.
I am only just reminding you of these things which you already know.
Meekandragi, thelsinatvanti, vishyalu, neen, maro, kusari, naapkunjedani, prayitistunam.
So what is the first division of the Book of Revelation?
Prakatana grandhavalo, mottamaditi bhagam, eutendi.
Chapter one, the resurrection glory.
Mottamaditi ajyayam, esu kriestu pravvarika, purnurudhana mahima.
Secondly.
Rendavadi ga.
Chapters two and three, glory of the Lord Jesus in the church.
Rendu moodu ajyalu, pravvani esu kriestuvarika, sangha mahima.
We must see this, dear brothers and sisters.
Priya sahodhiri, sahodhala, di, manam, tappanisariga.
Otherwise, we will continue to be defeated.
Aave lenatlate, inkka, manam, odi painatvanti, jeevthani, konasagistune, untam.
We will continue to fight among ourselves.
Manam, manam, majjalo, ne, poradu, ne, untam.
And we will become a laughing stock to the nonbelievers.
Abhiswasaalandharu, kuda, manamandram, oka, navvayana, avaga, ipotu, untam.
And the third division of the Book of Revelation.
Prakatana grandhavalo, moodava bhagamu.
We have chapters four and five.
Naalgu aidu ajyal.
The glory of the Lord Jesus Christ in heaven.
Pravvani esu kriestuvarika, paraloka mahima.
Chapters four and five is all about heaven.
Naalgu aidu ajyal, anta, kuda, paraloka, manik, sambandinchinatvanti.
And what is happening in heaven?
Paraloka, la, ee, jarugutunnaadi, anna vishyal, raibaddai.
How the Lord Jesus Christ is revealed in heaven?
Pravvani esu kriestuvaru, paraloka, la, ee vidanga, pratyakshaparshapadaru, anna vishyal.
Some examples.
Kuni, udharanalu.
When John was asked to come up and he went, the first thing he saw was the throne.
Epidate, yohanu, pilovandadu, paraloka, anik, aina, mottamaditi, chusindi, simhasanamu.
So first one would be glory of his throne.
Mottamaditi, ga, manam, chusedi, aina, kasimhasanam, yaka mahima.
Secondly, he describes the person.
Rendavadi ga, aina, vektini, vektithvaani, vivaristu, unnaadu.
Then glory, that is glory of his appearance.
Aina, yaka, mari, pratyakshata, yaka mahima.
Then we have glory of his spirit, the seven spirits mentioned.
Edu atmal, gurichi raibadundi, aina, yaka, atma, yaka mahima.
Then glory of his incarnation remembered in heaven.
Aina, manam, mari, ee vidanga, ite, bhuloka, anik, ravachinadu, dani, kusambandinchinatvanti, manam, kusambandinchinatvanti, aah mahima, kuda, akka, naapkunjeybadindi.
This is a very interesting topic that we could learn, study, take time to study.
Ee, evanmi, kuda, manamandram, samayam teeskoni, dhyanichi, patnamchisi, neechkoalasinatvanti, amsal.
We are giving just an overview of the Book of Revelation.
Prakatana grandhane, kusambandinchinatvanti, vihangavikshanamu, matramay, epidu.
So let us go with John the Apostle to heaven and look at all what he saw through the scriptures and she recognized the glory of Christ there.
Manamandram, kuda, yohanu, bhaktunato, paraloka, anik, velli, aina, chustunna, reetiga, manam, kuda, pravvani esu kriestuvarika mahima nu, sudam.
And then we come to the fourth section of the Book of Revelation.
Aatharavata, manam, prakatana grandhavalo, naalgu bhagani, kostam.
That is a long passage.
Adhi, entho, deergamayana, varthamana.
From chapter six, verse one, running down to chapter nineteen, verse ten.
Aravo ajyayam, moditi vachinamunchi, pantumidavajyayam, padavachinam, varaku, adhi, entho, deergamayana, mari, vaakyavagam.
Verse one of chapter six, running all the way down to chapter nineteen, verse ten.
Aravo ajyayam, moditi vachinamunchi, pantumidavajyayam, padavachinam, varaku, kuda.
Glory of the Lord Jesus Christ in tribulation.
Mari, sramalo.
Or during the tribulation.
Pravvani esu kriestuvarika, sramalo, undetatvanti, mahima.
There we have a wonderful revelation of the Lord Jesus.
Akka, anto, pravvani esu kriestuvarika, adbhutamayana, mari, bailaparshu, parupu, adhi, manam, chudavatsu.
Now we all of us know that chapter six, running down to chapter nineteen, are the chapters that we want to study of all the details about what's going to come.
Mari, bhavishyathul, ee, date, sanghatul, jaragabhotu, unnaayo, dani, kusambandinchinatvanti, varthamana, anta, kuda, prakatana grandhavalo, aravo ajyayam, moditi vachinamunchi, pantumidavajyayam, padavachinam, varaku, ivanmi, kuda, manam, dhyaninshalisinavu, amsal.
Some of us are masters in explaining the details about the Antichrist.
Mari, manalo, pantamandate, antichristunu, gurichi, vivarinsanani, vivarinsanalo, panditul.
We analyze this man so much that we would like to tell how many teeth he will have.
Mari, ee, vektini, manam, enthaga, vislasyincha, vanti, antichristu, keni, pallunnaayo, kuda, manajettam.
But we are missing the mark all the time.
Aite, manam, aah, gurini, pratiesari, kuda, tapipotu.
The passage is not about Antichrist, but it is about the Lord Jesus Christ.
Ee, yaka, varthamana, manadi, antichristunu, gurichi, kada, gani, pravvani esu kriestuvarani, gurichinatvanti.
Those details are minor details that we are majoring on.
Mari, manam, ee, date, entho, deerganga, vislasyincha, vishyal, ani, kuda, aavi, chala, chinnam, amsal.
But look at the revelation of Christ the Son of God in that long passage from time to time, he is given, he is brought before us, his glory is shown to us.
Ee vidanga, mari, padaharavajyayam, moditi vachin, aravo ajyayam, moditi vachinamunchi, pantumidavajyayam, padavachinam, varaku, chudande, aah, deerga, mari, vaakyamlo, pravvani esu kriestuvarani, ee, mahima, ee vidanga, bailaparshu, chudinda, aina, veshtu, unnaadu, aik, ivabadutu, unnae, enno, gopavishyal, akka, raibaddai.
Some examples.
Kuni, udharanalu.
Firstly.
Mottamaditi.
He is revealed to us as the lamb who is executing judgment.
Mari, mottamaditi, aina, manaki, ee vidanga, bailaparshapadad, ente, ee, date, gorrepilla, tirpu, tirustu, undo.
Look at chapter.
Gorrepilla, mari, esu kriestu pravvaru, manaki, bailaparshapadad.
Look at chapter six, verse one.
Aravo ajyayam, moditi vachinamu.
I saw when the lamb opened one of the seals, who opened the seals? The lamb opens the seals.
Ikka, chusinatlate, aah, gorrepilla, edu mudralalo, vipinapudu, yavre, ani, aah, mudralanu, vipindi, gorrepilla, viputu, undi.
God is showing to us as to who is calling the shots at the end.
Mari, antidinalo, yavru, ite, nerneyalu, teeskuntunnaaru, anna vishyani, devu, manak bailaparshatunnaaru.
It is at his command, the judgments will fall upon the earth.
Aina, yaka, mari, maata, pree, maata, dhvaraane, mari, antidinalo, ee, tirpu, anedhi, tirpu, tirshabadutundi.
Then in chapter eight, we find the Lord Jesus Christ presented to us as the high priest angel.
Mari, neevavava, ajyana, chuskunaplate, padvayani esu kriestuvaru, pradhanaaya, aja, dutha, manaku, pratyakshaparshabadutunna.
From whose hands the prayers of the saints are ascending to the throne.
Mari, paraloka, lo, notvanti, aika, simhasanani, mari, parishuddhaleka, pradhanalu, yavri, hastam, dhvara, paike, velitunnaayo, anna vishyalu, raibaddai.
So it's a revelation of the Son of God.
Edi, kuda, devuniyaka, kumariniyaka, pratyakshata.
Then we also have the mighty angel in chapter ten.
Mari, padavajyayam, lo, chuskunatlate, mahaduta, guricha, raibadundi.
The mighty angel, the judge.
Balishdainavero, dutha, mari, tirpu, tirchedatvanti, dutha.
chapter ten one to three.
पदो आज्जायमो मोट्टिव मूड़ा वचन
then fourthly we have the man child who rules the world who rules the nations.
चूड़न्दी मरी तरवाता वचनालु चुस्कुन अपुडु मरी देवनी मनुष्यनी अका कुमारडु
chapter twelve verse five.
पन्नेड़ा आज्जायमो ऐद्वा वचनलो रायबड्डो ये लोकान अंतित्नी एलेटोटु व्यक्ति गुरिंची रायबड़िउन्नदी
and then we have fifthly the lamb the author of redemption.
ऐद्वा वधिका मरी मानले गिमोचनमु चेसेटु अंडी गोरपिल्लनु गुरिंची रायबड़िउन्दी
chapter fourteen one to four.
पदनाल्गु आज्जायमो मोट्टिनाल्गु वचनालु
then we have sixthly
आरो वधिका
heavenly son of man who reaps the harvest.
मरी परलोकमलो उन्ना टुंटी देवनी कुमारडु मरी पंटलु कोसेटु अंडी व्यक्ति गुरिंची रायबड़िउन्दी
chapter fourteen fourteen to sixteen.
पदनाल्गु आज्जायम नुची पदहारो वधियाम वरकु
then seventhly lamb the heavenly bridegroom.
मरी ए पद एडवधिका परलोकमलो उन्ना टुंटी मरी गोरपिल्ला अदी अदिंगा पेंडली कुमार्तु गुरिंची रायबड़िउन्दी
chapter nineteen verse seven.
पंतोमिदा आज्जायमो एड्वा वचन
so through this description of the tribulation time through these details that are given about what the things that are going to happen we have the Lord Jesus Christ his glory revealed to us we must see that glory.
प्रवाहिने ये स्रमल कालमलो एविथे विषयालु भविष्यतले जरगबोतु उन्नायो वाट्नी विवरिस्तु उन्नापुडु वाडिल्लो प्रवाहिने येसु कृष्टुवार्यका महिमा गुरिंची एन्नो विषयालु रायबड़िउन्नाई आयका येसु कृष्टु प्रवार्यका महिमानु मानुमान्द्रन चुसिया वरंगा उन्डाली
so the resurrection glory
मोट्टमात्रिका पुनुरुध्धानमहिमा
glory of the Lord Jesus in the church.
प्रवाहिने येसु कृष्टुवार्यका संघमलो उन्ना टुंटी महिमा
glory of the Lord Jesus in heaven.
परलोकमलो प्रवाहिने येसु कृष्टुवार्यका महिमा
glory of the Lord Jesus Christ in tribulation.
स्रमल कालमलो प्रवाहिने येसु कृष्टुवार्यका महिमा
then fifthly the fifth section is a short one glory of the Lord Jesus Christ in revelation or at revelation.
मरी इप्पुडाइथे येसु कृष्टु प्रवारु मानंदरकी कनपड़तारो प्रत्यक्षपर्सपड्डारो बायलपर्सपड्डारो अकड़ा आसमयलो उन्ना टुंटी आयन अका महिमा
that is revelation chapter nineteen from verse eleven to the end of the chapter that is verse twenty one.
मधुकुणाव वचनम नुची इरवयका वचनम वरकु पंतोमिदा आज्जायमलो
so there we have the fifth part fifth aspect of the glory of Christ revealed in the book of Revelation.
प्रकटनग्रंधावलो प्रवाहिने येसु कृष्टुवार्यका महिमानु गुरिंची विवरिंचिन अटु अंडी ऐद्वा अम्स्यामो अदी
my appeal to you is dear brothers and sisters please get interested in studying this subject of the glory of Christ.
प्रिय सहोदरी सहोदला रणनाविन्ना पिम्मिटंटे प्रवाहिने येसु कृष्टुवार्यका महिमा की संबंधित नटु अंडी विषयालु ध्यानिंस्टानिकी पट्टनम चेडानकी मीर प्राइतिन्द चेस्तुन्दी
this will provide us with the answers to all our problems.
मानुकुण अटु अंडी अन्नी समस्यालकु जवाबुलु येका महिमा द्वारा मानु सुड़वाचु
this is God's answer.
इदे देवनी अका जवाब
the glory of his son.
प्रवाहिने येसु कृष्टुवार्यका महिमा
behold this man
इचूड़न्दी ये व्यक्तिनी
the Lord Jesus coming wearing the crown of thorns and standing in front of pilot.
मरी पाइलेट पिलातु एदु तार मुल्ला किरम्पिट खिरिटम्पेटुकोने वस्तुन अटु अंडी येसु कृष्टु प्रवार्यनी चूड़न्दी
but he didn't realize that glory that was there of the Lord Jesus that eternal glory.
मरी येसु कृष्टु प्रवार्यकन टुटु नित्यमयन महिमानु अकड़ोनोट्ट पिलातु गानी यवरुकुनी चोड़ यवरुकोडा चोडलेक्पय
very often we are no better than pilot.
मानु चालमन चुस्कुन अटु अंडी मानु पिलातु कंटे एन्तो गोपवानु श्रेष्ठलोमनी कादु
we want him to wear the crown of thorns all the time.
मानु आइथे आयन इप्पुडु कोडा मुल्ला किरिटु दरिंसालने मानु मनुसल अनुकुटु उन्तम
as long as we hear another sermon on that subject we would be happy.
मानु एविदंगाइथे आयका कामसिम विदा वर्तमानम इन्तमो मुल्ला किरिटु बेटुकोना येसुनु गुरिंचिन अटु वर्तमान उन्नापुडु मानु एन्तो आनंदिंग उन्तम
but that which was hidden from the eyes of pilot the governor should not be hidden from our eyes.
एदाइथे पिलातु दृष्टी एदु तार दाचबडिन अटु अंडी महिमा इदाइथे उन्नो आमहिमा मी एदु तार नाय एदु तार दाचबड़ि उन्नकोड
did you notice the five names given to the Lord Jesus in that revelation when he comes to be seen by everybody to rule reign upon the earth?
ये भूम्यनकी प्रवाहिने येसु कृष्टु प्रवारु वच्ची अंदरु तमा कल्लतो चोड़ गेलेन टुटु प्रत्यक्षतिका वच्चिनपुडु आयनकी विवंडन टुटु ऐद्वीर्दलु वी गुर्तुनाय
revelation chapter nineteen verse eleven.
पंतोमिदा आज्जायमो पदकुणाव वचनम
he was called faithful and true.
आयन नम्मदगिन वाडुनु सत्यवंत्रु अनी पीरु पिलोवड्डाड
and then verse thirteen
पदमूड़ा वचनम
he is called the word of God.
देवनी अका वाक्यमो अनी आयन पिलोवड्डाड
and also we find he was called the king of kings and lord of lords in verse sixteen.
पदहारो वचनमलो राजलकराजनु प्रभुलकु प्रभुगा आयन पिलोवड्डाड
and we also find another name in verse twelve.
अदी एविदंगा पन्नेड़ा वचनमलो इनको का पीर चुस्ताम
a name that no man knew but he himself.
आ पीरु आयन तपिथे मरे अवरकिनी तेलिन अटु अंडी पीरु तो पिलोवड्डाड
indicating to us that the glory of the Lord Jesus Christ is unending.
अदी मानुकी एन चुचिस्तुन्दंटे प्रवाहिने येसु कृष्टुवार्यका महिमा कु एटु अंडी अंतमु लेदु
so please keep on thinking about these things.
कम्बट्टी ये विषयाल गुरिंची मीरु आलोचिस्तुने उन्नंडी
the glory of the Lord Jesus at his revelation.
प्रवाहिने येसु कृष्टु प्रवार्यका महिमा आयन आप्रत्यक्षतिका मानंदर एदु तो वच्चिनपुडु
the whole world will see this.
प्रपंचमंता कोडा चुस्तुन्दी
but today God has given us the privilege to see them beforehand.
आइथे देवुलु नीकु नाकु आयका महिमानु आम्स्याल जरक्ककु मुंदे चोड़ गेलेन टुटु धन्यता नीकुन अक्षय
and at that revelation the beast will be cast out and defeated.
आयका प्रत्यक्षता इप्पुडाइथे येसु कृष्टु प्रवारु वस्तारो येका मरी जन्तु अनेदा नी तोसवे बडुतुदी अकड़ा दानिका ओटमी उस्तु उन्तम
thrown into the lake of fire.
मरी आग्नि गुणमलो पलवे बडुतु
so it's a very important aspect of the glory of the Lord Jesus.
अदी प्रवाहिने येसु कृष्टुवार्यका एन्तो प्रामुख्यमयन महिमा
then we come to the sixth aspect of the glory of Christ in the book of Revelation.
अतरवाता प्रकटनग्रंधावलो उन्ना टुंटी प्रवाहिने येसु कृष्टुवार्यका आरो अम्स्याम गुरिंची चुस्ताम
that is the whole of chapter twenty.
अदी इरवय आज्जायम संपूर्तिका
the glory of the Lord Jesus Christ in the millennial reign.
मरी वैयेल्ला पालनलो प्रवाहिने येसुवार्यका महिमा
this is another aspect that of the glory of Christ that we have neglected so much.
मरी मानु विस्मरिंचिन अटु अंडी प्रवाहिने येसु कृष्टुवार्यका महिमालो इदी एन्तो प्रामुख्यमयन अटु अंडी
what are we hoping to do in the future?
मानु भविष्यतले एन चायबोतुन्नावनी एन चायलन अनुकुटुन
we are all waiting to do good do well in life.
मानु जीवितालो मरी मंचिगा उन्नालनी मंचिगा एदगालनी अनुकुटु उन्तम
and then at the end of it all what are we hoping?
अनंत आइपन्तराता मानु देन गुरिनी एन उहिस्तुन्ना
when the final injection also has been given
मरी मानुकी चिवरी इंजेक्शन कोडा विवबडिन तरवाता
and the doctor says nothing else can be done.
इनका डॉक्टरलंद्रकुडा वैद्यलंद्र इनका मानु चेय चेयगलिन देवले दाने चेतले तेस्नपुडु
then we begin to sing safe in the arms of Jesus.
अप्पुडु मानु पाटम माल्लबड्डाव येसु कृष्टुवार्यका चेतललो एन्तो नम्मदिगा उन्नतन्नावनी
forever with the Lord.
प्रभुवार्तो सदा कालमवनी
which is not wrong
अदी तप्पणी कादु
but our view and our vision is so defective.
मानु दर्शनमु मानयका ऊहा अदी एन्तो परिमितल गलिगिनिदी अदी एन्तो तप्पलुतु निंदिन्दी
heaven is a temporal place will you agree or not?
मीरु ये विषयानकी अंगिकरिस्तारा लेदा परलोकमनी अदी तात्कालिकमयन अटु अंडी स्थलम
today Christian is waiting to go to heaven.
इदिनाना क्राइस्टलंद्रकुडा परलोकानिकी बोटानिकी वेचियुन्नारु
and we want to go there and find some corner in heaven borrow a mat or something from an angel and sleep there that's all what we want.
मानु कोडा परलोकमला एदु मूलक वेलिपय दोद्दगरोक मंच चाप दिसकोन पड़कोलन अनुकुट
and we say now he's gone now he will be there forever and ever.
इनका अप्पुडु मानु आ चापमेदे सदा कालम नित्यत्तम वर्बेदा आ चापेदे उन्तम अनुकुट
is it true?
अदी निजमा
it is not.
अदी सत्यम कादुन
God's program and plan is very different.
देवुलु निर्णयिंचिन अटु अंडी प्रणालिका अदी एन्तो वित्यासमतु कुडुकुन अटु अंडी
there is a millennial reign for the saints of God.
देवनी अका परिषदलकु वैयेल्ला पालना अनेका कालम उन्दिन्दी
we have been with the Lord Jesus Christ for thousand years.
मानुमान्द्रमु प्रभुवार्तो वैयेल्ला पाटु बनु राज्य चायबोतुन्ना
but we have not yet come to the promise that is given in the theme verse.
आइथे मानु की विवंडन टुटु मूल अम्स्यामलो वाक्तानानिकी मानु इनका रालेदु
it is beyond that.
अदी दानिकी इनका तरवाता जरिगेटु अंडी संगत
God has a great plan for you and for me.
देवुलु नी पक्षन ना पक्षन गप्पा प्रणालिक कलिगुन्नाडु
we are stopping at heaven.
आइथे मानुमान्द्रमु कोडा परलोकम दग्रा आइपोतु उन्ना
it is not right to do that it is not right to do that.
आविदंगा परलोकम दग्रा आइपोतोन अदी मानु चेसे मंच पणी कादु
the people of this world stop at death.
ये लोकमलो उन्ना टुटु प्रजलंद्रकुडा आ परलोकम उन्ना दग्रा आइपोतु उन्तम
they can't think beyond that.
वारु परलोकानिकी इनका मरी वेरे दान तरवाता जरिगे विषयाल कानी वाल्की दान आलोचिंस्ले
and we Christians stop at heaven.
आइथे मानु कोडा मरी परलोकम दग्रा आइपोत
we can't go beyond that.
मानु कोडा परलोकानिकंटे मरी इनका मुंद्दी केलले
but God has prepared something more than that.
आइथे देवुलु अनंत कंटे श्रेष्ठमयन अदी नीकु नाकु सिद्धपर्चड
he wants us to reign with him.
आयन नीवु नेनु आयन तो पाटु परिपालन चायलनी राज्यम चायलनी कोरकुट्टनाडु
that is what you find in the book of Revelation chapter twenty.
अदी मानु प्रकटनग्रंधावलो इरवा आज्जायल चुसेदी
six times over thousand years mentioned in that chapter.
आरु सारलु पद वैयेल्ला पालना वैयेंडलु अनेक अम्स्यामु रायबडितु उचिन्दी
so that we may not make a mistake about it.
सद्वारा मानु आविष्यानिकुचिन अटु अंडी एटु अंडी परपाट चेकुन्ना उन्नटानिकी
that we may keep our eyes upon it.
दद्वारा मानुकी दृष्टनता कोडा दानिमेदे उन्सालनी
but all the time we are only encouraging one another to go to heaven get ready to go to heaven.
आइथे मानु मानु चेसे पण एमिटंटे ओकाल नोकल पुरिकल्पेदी प्रोत्साहपर्चेदी परलोकानिकी बोटानी मात्रम
there is life and a program of God beyond heaven.
मरी परलोकानिकी तरवाता जीविताम उन्नदी देवनी अका गप्पा प्रणालिका अनेदी कोड
and then in chapter twenty one
अतरवाता इरवय कोडा वचन
from verse one
वक्तवाह वचनम नुची
up to chapter twenty two verse five.
इरवय रेण्डा आज्जायमो ऐद्वा वचनम वरकु
Glory of the Lord Jesus Christ in eternity
नित्यत्तमलो प्रभावीन येसु कृष्टुवारी एक्का महिमानु गुरिंची रायबडळ उन्दी
That is what you find in those verses
अदी मीर आवचनालो मीर चूसेदी
It takes time to study all these things
ई अन्नीडळ कुडा मनु पटिंस्टानकी समयम कावानी
But they will definitely make us better believers, better Christians
आईते एपुढे ते मनु ध्यानिस्ताम आवाक्यालु मरणली मरी उन्नतमायन टोटी विश्वासलगा, उन्नतमायन क्राइस्टावलगा चेसतूदी
That will move and motivate us to lead that victorious life in this world
ई लोकमलो मरु जय जीवितम जीविंस्टानकी कावल्सन प्रोत्साहमु आवाक्यालन सदूत
So the seventh division is the glory of Christ as revealed in eternity briefly given to us in chapter twenty-one up to verse five of chapter twenty-two
इरवय रण्डळ वज्ञामु आयदो वचनामु प्रभावीन येसु कृष्टुवारी एक्का नित्यत्तमला उन्ने महिमा गुरिंची क्लुपतंगा रायबडळ उन्दी
And then the rest of the chapter twenty-two is just a reminder of what has been already said and reminding the people of God to be ready for the coming of the Lord Jesus
मिंगता भागालु आरो वचनामध्ये ची इरवय रण्डळ वज्ञामलो उन्नट टोटी वचनालु इंतक मुंद्दुगा चप्पुवंडन टोटी विषयाले ई अन्नी कुडा देवनी एक्का पिल्ललकु नापकुंचे से देवदंते प्रभावीन येसु कृष्टुवारी एक्का राकडकु सिद्धपडळ उन्दालनी मरी पदेपदेक नापकुंचे सेट टोटू टोटी वचनालु
Behold, I come quickly three times over
ईदिगो नेनु त्वरगावच्चुनानु अन्ना वचनामु मूढसारल रायबडळ
So that we may having seen the glory of the Lord Jesus through the book of Revelation we may be ready for his coming
प्रकटन ग्रांधमलो वज्ञाम तरवाता वज्ञामलो उन्नट टोटी आयन एक्का महिमानु चूसिना पुडू आयन एक्का राकडकरकै नीवु नेनु सिद्धपडळ वारंगा उन्दवटानकी
Please try to study the book of Revelation with this particular theme in mind, the glory of the Lord Jesus
प्रकटन ग्रांधानी प्रभुवार एक्का महिमा अनेट टोटी अंश्यमु, मूल अंश्यमु मेदा दृष्टुंची मीर सदूतूरांडी
Because it is a revelation of the Son of God
रीम्टंते देवनी एक्का कुमारण एक्का प्रत्यक्षता
Resurrection glory of the Lord Jesus
पुनुर्धान महिमा, प्रभावीन येसु कृष्टुवारी एक्का पुनुर्धान महिमा
Glory of the Lord Jesus in the church
प्रभावीन येसु कृष्टुवारी एक्का संघमला उन्नट टोटी महिमा
Glory of the Lord Jesus Christ in heaven
परलोकमला प्रभावीन येसु कृष्टुवारी एक्का महिमा
Glory of the Lord Jesus Christ in tribulation
स्रमला कालमलो प्रभावीन येसु कृष्टुवारी एक्का महिमा
Glory of the Lord Jesus Christ in revelation
मरी आयना प्रत्यक्षंगा मनांदर येदुता बैलपरस्पर वंडनपुडू आयना मनांदर चूसेट टोटू टी आयन एक्का महिमा
Glory of the Lord Jesus Christ in the millennial reign
वैयेल्ला पालनलो प्रभावीन येसु कृष्टुवारी एक्का महिमा
Glory of the Lord Jesus Christ in eternity
नित्यत्तमलो प्रभावीन येसु कृष्टुवारी एक्का महिमा
This is the answer to every one of us tonight
इदे मनांदरकुन नट टोटी प्रश्नलकु जवाब
This is what we desire to know
इदे मनामदन नुकुडा नेचकोडानकी, तेलस्कोडानकी कोरिक कलिगुन्दाली
We are the only thing that will bring satisfaction to our heart
इदे मनु ह्रोदयालकु संतृत्ती चेटट टोटी
We are made like that
मनु आ रीतिका रूपिप्पव्डाम
Only with the revelation and the knowledge of the glory of Christ that we can lead a satisfied life
केवलमु प्रभावीन येसु कृष्टुवारी एक्का ग्नानानकी सम्मंदिंचीना प्रत्यक्षता द्वारा आ ग्नानानी तेलस्कोटं द्वाराने तृप्तिकलिंगिनट टोटी जीवितालु नीवु नेने जीविंस्कन
Nothing else dear brothers and sisters will make us truly happy
मरी इनका वेरे एदी कुडा मनकी निजमायन संतोषानी, आनंदानी वाले
But because of our fallen nature, that one part of us does not like to see the glory of Christ
आईते मनलो पडळपोइनट टोटी, पत्नमायन टोटी ओका भागम उन्नट टोटी द्वारा मरी येसु कृष्टु प्रभुवार एक्का ई महिमानु गुरिची तेलस्कोडानकी, पटिंस्टानकी आसिकती चूपिंचद
That is why we go after other things
अंदुवालने मनु आणे एकमायन इतर विषयालु मम्मडे वेलतू उन्तम
That is we have shifted the purpose of reading the Bible also
अंदुवालने मरी लेखनाली सदैट टोटी प्रधम उद्देशाने कुडा मनु मार्चकुट टोच
We read the Bible not to see the glory of the Son of God but to do see other things
देवनी एक्का, देवनी कुमारडळे ने येसु कृष्टुवारी एक्का महिमानु चूडळ्डानकी मनु पर, पर, मरी परिषदकरांदन सदूत वेलेद कानी इनका नेकमायन विषयालु सुटानकी सदूत उन्ना
So may the Lord help us to escape that error
मरी आयका तप्पुनची मनु बायडपर्टानकी देवडळ मनकी सहायं चेनका
Set our hearts to see, desire to see the glory of the Son of God
देवनी एक्का कुमारण एक्का महिमानु चूडळागना देवडळ मनु ह्रोदयमु दानमेदे दृष्टुंची लागना सहायं चेनक
Lord show me thy glory
प्रभुवार ई एक्का महिमानु नाक चूपिंचंडी
Can you see, remember that man praying, that man, the great man of God praying in the Old Testament times
मरी पातन इबंदरन कालमलो आ गपप दायवजन एक्का प्राधनम नापकुम उन्नद
Lord show me thy glory
प्रभुवार ई एक्का महिमानु नाक चूपिंच
That is the prayer that will be answered, that will bring satisfaction
आयका प्राधना कु देवडळ जवाबिस्ताड आ जवाब द्वारा मनकु तृप्तिकलिगु उन्त
Shall we pray
मनु प्राधिंचुना
Our gracious loving Father, we thank thee for the reminder of this thy, the purpose of thee giving us the scriptures even to reveal thy Son to us
कृपकला, प्रेमगला, तंड्री मीर माकीचिनट टोटी ई एक्का हितसरिकलकै माकु नापकुंचे सिनंदके मीको उन्नाल लेखनाल द्वारा मी कुमारण एक्का महिमानु मीम चूडळलनी, लेखनाल माकीचिनंदके मीको उन्नाल
Oh Lord Jesus, thou didst say "You searched the scriptures because you think they are in, you find eternal life, they testify of me"
प्रभावीन येसु मीर अन्नारु, मीर अंदर नित्य जीवम कोरकै लेखनाल परिषदिंस्नार कानी अभी ननु गुरिंचे, नन्ने बैलपरस्परतुनाय, नन्ने प्रत्यक्ष परस्परतुनाय नीर अन्नार
Lord help us that we may begin to see all over the scriptures the glory of the Son of God
प्रभुवार, लेखनाल अन्नी तिमे सदैट टोटी पुडू देवनी एक्का कुमारण एक्का महिमानु चूडळगलिगना गुतिंचगलिगनागना माक सहायं चेन
Not only the shining glory
प्रभुवार प्रकाशिंचे एट टोटी महिमा मात्रमे काद
But the glory that is full of grace and truth
कृपा सत्यमलतो निंदिट टोटी महिमानु चूडळगलिगना माक सहायं चेन
The glory of his character
आयन एक्का गुणगणालो एक्का, लक्षणालो एक्का महिमानु चूडळगलिगना
The beauty of the virtues of the Lord Jesus
प्रभावीन येसु कृष्टुवारी एक्का गुणलक्षणालो एक्का सावंदर्याने चूडळगलिगना
Lord, we want to see more of thee
प्रभुवार मी गुरिंची अनेकमायन विषयालु मीमल मरिंतका चूडळलन अनुकुट
Help us Lord throughout this Bible conference that we may be led to see different aspects of the beauty of the Lord Jesus
प्रभुवार ई एक्का कान्फ्रेंसलो जरिगेप्रति कुडिकत द्वारा कुडा प्रभावीन येसु कृष्टुवारी एक्का सावंदर्यमु, महिमा सावंदर्यामला उन्नट टोटी ओकामसेनायनासरे मीम कुडिकल द्वारा तेलस्कोडानकी माक सहायं चेन
Lord, we thank thee for the different aspects of the glory of thy Son as revealed in the book of Revelation
प्रकटन ग्रांधमलो मी कुमारण नीरे रीतिका आयन एक्का महिमाकु सम्मंदिंचीना कुन्नी विषयालु माकवरके पोंदुपरिचर, अंदरबट्टी मीको उन्नाल
Lord forgive us that we, Lord, have neglected some of this but rather taken up with the details of judgments and the Antichrist and other details that are found in the book of Revelation
प्रकटन ग्रांधमलो उन्नट टोटी तीर्पुन गुरिंची, अंतिकी, अंत्य क्राइस्टावला, कृष्टन गुरिंची विषयालु मा प्रभुवार मीम अंतगान विसलेसिंचाम कानी मी कुमारण ने येसु कृष्टुवारी एक्का महिमानु गुरिंची नट टोटी ध्यानमु ध्यान गुरिंची नट टोटी पट्टनामु मीम चेलेद, अंदरबट्टी मम्मल क्षमिंचंडी
Lord, as a result we remain unsatisfied and unfruitful
प्रभुवार आ रीतिका मीम येसु कृष्टु प्रभुवार एक्का महिमानु चूडळनट टोटी कारणावान प्रभुवार मीम आसंतृत्ती कलिगन वारंगा, प्रभुवार मरी फलाबु लेनट टोटी वारंगा जीविस्तूना
Lord, hear an answer of our prayer
प्रभुवार मा प्राधनालकीची जवाब दाइच
Reveal thy Son to us
मी कुमारण माक प्रत्यक्ष परस्पर
Send us a way satisfied
प्रभुवार तृप्तितो मम्मल एपंपिंचंडी
Lord, even tonight give us the discipline to kneel in thy presence for a period of time to meditate on the glory of Christ
प्रभुवार ई रात्र कालमलो कुडा मी एक्का कुमारण एक्का महिमानु गुरिंची नट टोटी कुन्नी अंशालायनासरे ध्यानिंस्टानकी, प्रभुवार मोकरिंची, प्राधिंस्टानकी, ध्यानिंस्टानकी कावल्सन क्रमशिक्षण नमा कनग्रहिंचंडी
We pray with thanksgiving in the name of our loving Savior, the Lord Jesus Christ
वंदनाल चेलिस्तु मा प्रीरक्षकडाने येसु कृष्टुवारी, रक्षकडाने येसु कृष्टुवारी नामलो प्राधिंचे अडिगेडुकुन्सनाम तंड्री
Amen
अमेन
First day, first session is already over. Once it starts, it will go very quickly, right? And as a first day itself, we have a lot of homework. So we have to do our homework after go to our houses or our rooms. Without further delay, a few announcements are there. Soon after this meeting, we will have dinner. What is this hall name? Viksha, there's a hall next to me here, and the hall name, I forgot that. So we will have dinner over there, what is that? Vik, Varvik, Varvika. And after that, tomorrow morning again, seven o'clock, we will have family prayer. And before that, we will have prayer. Just like if anybody wants to join us, you can come and join, five to six, early morning prayer. We will pray for this conference. If anybody were interested to join, you can come, morning five to six, we have prayer. After that, we will have breakfast, after that, the family prayer, then we will have breakfast. Please follow the instruction, breakfast time is eight to eight thirty. It will be served only eight to eight thirty. So we have continental breakfast, at the same time we have Indian breakfast. If you want to go to the continental breakfast, there is a hotel provides, you need to have ticket. So you got to show the ticket. If you don't have the ticket, that breakfast coupon, they won't serve you. So our brothers, one of our brother will stand over there during eight to eight thirty. If you come after eight thirty, so breakfast won't be served because if you don't get the ticket, you don't have breakfast. The same manner, you can also come here between eight to eight thirty. So eight thirty or eight thirty-five, once you enter into then, you can stay till eight forty, okay? Don't get offended if the doors are closed. So make sure you have to come on time. The purpose why we are telling, because after we have time, eight thirty to nine thirty to take shower and to get ready for the Bible study. Yes, we will have last prayer, closing prayer. Brother Ryder, please, I request Brother Ryder Kumar
Our loving heavenly Father, merciful and trustworthy God We are so thankful for your heavenly plans and purposes for our lives to build us up in most holy faith and we thank you for the vision, for the love and the burden that you have given to our dear brothers and sisters at this little flock church in Atlanta. Father, we thank you for making it possible for so many people, so many of us who could come to this gathering from different parts of this country. And it is our prayer, oh Lord, that during these days that you will convict us, our sins, that we will repent and each one who has come here, Lord, will not go empty but we will know the truth of becoming overcomers. And it is our prayer that each family that struggling individuals that are struggling with sin, shame, problems oh mighty God, it is our prayer that you will mightily work in, in the lives of our dear ones. And we do pray that the fellowship will be so enriching to all of us that we will be going back to our places with real hunger for you, hunger for your word and burden to wait upon you and be a blessing to many people. It's our prayer, oh God, that you will meet the needs and we do pray that you will give us spirit of wisdom, spirit of the revelation of the Lord Jesus Christ and draw us closer to yourself, oh Father. We do pray that you will take away all the physical, mental tiredness from those of us who have traveled long distances. Pray that you will refresh us with good sleep and we do want to pray that the meetings that are going to be held these coming couple of days would be so enriching to us that we will all be glorifying to you and Lord, we will be built up in most holy faith. Lord, meet the needs of your dear ones. Pray that you will undertake for all those who are working hard, Lord, night and day to make this conference a blessing to all of us. Pray for those who are working at different practical, in practical ways. Pray that you will give them extra grace and strength. Those who are doing this online ministry, Lord, for the blessings of others who are listening and watching the program through internet, we do want to pray that they also would be blessed. And we do pray for the ministry of the word that those of, those who are waiting on you, Lord, will not be ashamed but they will be enriched by the ministry of the word. So we do want to pray that you will bring revelations, Lord, from your word to bless us and keep us and make us strong and, Lord our inner man may be strengthened and our faith will be increasing, Lord, during these days. Father, we commit ourselves to you for tonight. We pray if you come tonight, you will keep us ready to meet you and it is our prayer that you will come soon to take us, Lord. We pray with thanksgiving in the precious and powerful name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Now unto him who is able to keep you from falling and to present you fraudless before the presence of his glory with exceeding joy to the only wise God. Glory and honor, dominion and power forevermore, amen.
Praise the Lord. Next meeting will be started tomorrow morning, seven o'clock, promptly, God willing, yes? So today we started a little bit late, don't think all meetings will start late. So, God willing, you start all meetings promptly, whatever the schedule is at the back of your song sheet. So tomorrow morning, seven o'clock, praise the Lord.